Good evening and welcome to the City of New Franklin Regular Council Meeting. We're going to begin with our Mr. Cotts night, although I think we're starting with David Stock tonight, if I remember correctly.
Jim, don't mind.
Do you mind? We have five first readings and two third readings. Mr. Stock?
All right, give me a second here. Yeah, I got it. I'm sure everybody's here. Yep, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the Streets and Drainage Committee. All members are present at 6:01. We're gonna talk about Resolution Number 22R70, which is a resolution authorizing New Franklin to participate in the Summit County Engineers Regional Pavement Maintenance Program for 2023 and declaring an emergency. And this is, every year we get in on this, you know, it gets our bids out there. We don't have this Street yet, but it just gets us going. And Brian will have that all for us before too long.
It's a routine program.
Yeah, exactly. So I'm gonna be asking for a wave of the three readings so we can get this underway. Anybody have any questions? All right, that was a quick one. We're gonna close at 6:02. Thank you.
We will open the Finance Committee meeting at 6:02. Resolution 22R71, a resolution authorizing additional appropriations to 2022 annual operating appropriation budget and declaring an emergency. This is necessary for the income tax fund due to an increase in collection fees of over $30,000 effective November 1st, 2022. Ms. Cott.
That is correct. We are taking a little bit more money, and so the collection fees are up a little bit, more than we anticipated. So this is just to cover that until the end of the year.
Comments, questions?
The only question I have, so it sounds like you are seeing more revenue coming. Is that due to remote working, or is that for another reason?
I don't, I don't really think it's that because they have not outlined that to us. And I can't get, and I can't get any figures off the top of my head. But I could certainly supply those to you if you'd like, the change from this year to last year. You'll see them anyway, obviously, at the end of the year, but I can give to you even month by month if you'd like.
Okay, wave three. Fantastic. Moving on to Resolution 22R72, a resolution authorizing transfer funds from the General Fund to the Police District Fund and declaring an emergency. Anybody ever heard this before?
Never.
Uh, this would be again from the General Fund to Police District Fund, amount of $325,000. Questions, comments? Wave three. Moving on. Resolution 22R74, a resolution approving change orders to North Star Asphalt Incorporated for the 2021 New Franklin Resurfacing Project and authorizing then-and-now purchase orders for payment of same and declaring an emergency. And this is for a total of $31,701.38.
Thirty-three thousand?
No, thirty-three.
Thirty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight. It's a resolution.
Well, then I think it's important that you all pay attention because I did read it as 22R74, so if you're not keeping up with me.
Sorry, early day.
All right.
I apologize.
Again, we are on Resolution 22R74.
That's important.
Like, I'm gonna pack now.
$71,701,001.
That's what I turned to tell you there.
So now we agree that I am correct.
I was with you the whole time.
All right.
Yes, sir. Yeah, basically, this is, there were two change orders, the $12,552 and the $2,839. Those, all three change orders are attached. The, the change orders for the first two I mentioned, basically, it was, I guess, the $12,000 one had to do with Vanderhoof and Fairland. The $2,000, $2,800 one had to do with Shays Hotel. The $16,000 was the result of a scrimmer's error. When the, when the GPD put the bid amounts in the initial resolution, they, he transposed some numbers, and he was short on alternate.
Second to, no, alternate to.
Uh, it, he had listed initially was approved $247,097.77. The actual number for alternate two was $263,405.5. The difference being $16,309.28, so we have a change order for that one as well. And you will note that we have combined this, not just the change orders, but also the then-and-now. And I'll let Susan speak to that later. We've had further conversations with, with the auditor, and certainly, this is a good clean way to address it, we believe. So that's what this is about.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I'm not sure on this one, is there a timeframe where we got to? Should we waive this one, or is this one our three read? Because I know with the next one, we've got 30 days to get that one taken care of. So that one, I definitely recommend we waive the three reads on it.
Um, I would recommend that you waive it, only because this is for the 2021 pavings, so they're trying to get this cleared out. And this is the things that are holding us back to be able to carry on.
Okay. Wave three. Okay, if you all follow along with me, we'll go to Resolution 22R73. A resolution approving then-and-now purchase orders for outstanding invoices from Kavanaugh Building Corporation in the amount of $33,558.38. And I believe this is where Susan would like to comment on this further.
Yes. And, you know, from the last time I talked to the auditor, and they said that, well, we have no obligation until the, the change order is approved. Went back and talked to her supervisor, and she said, well, that's not all. So they asked that we do both of them, so we're doing both. So this is the second part, and then it's in 74, which I included both parts in, so that we will have everything covered, and we will be cohesive.
Thank you.
Comments, questions? And Mr. Mayor?
Well, just, we talked about what we, you know, the reason for these. It's $750,000 contract, so it's not shocking that there'd be some change orders. Quite frankly, I mean, I'm sure it would be helpful, Kavanaugh, if you could pass it tonight. You, we did phrase it as an emergency, primarily for that purpose. If there's questions about it, of course, we defer, but if you're comfortable with it, as I said, Kavanaugh would probably like to get paid.
Sure.
Well, and the reason that it's an emergency is because, as you know, if it's not, then there's a additional 30 days after you pass it. So, and since this project's already done, that would be, that's why it was titled that way.
These are the changes they kind of suggested is gonna really help us out.
As we came in.
Yeah, I'm going along with the project.
Yeah, so this goes along with Resolution 22R69, and we talked about the last meetings, and went through the last meeting, all the changes and what they involved and stuff.
Yes.
So it's exactly the same. Comfortable wave of the three? Any other questions, comments? Moving on to Resolution for second, third reading. Resolution 22R62, a resolution approving then-and-now purchase orders for the General Fund and all other funds for the City of New Franklin, declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. Uh, we've had this for three readings now. Questions, comments? You've all got your questions answered, amount of time that we've had. Questions? Is that it? Went looking for you. Comments there?
Historic.
It is, and very, very much appreciated by many.
Very much appreciated.
So, comfortable voting on this tonight? Super duper, we are. Resolution 22R64, amended. A resolution granting wage increase for the New Franklin Finance Director and declaring an emergency. Uh, this is moving the finance director from annual salary of $57,324 I don't know where it is. Oh, $60,000. And we've had plenty of discussions on this. Anyone else have questions or comments? Ready to vote on it tonight? And I think, I think we're good then. We'll close Finance meeting at 6:10.
I could've been one of your fastest committee meetings ever, Jim, with all that other stuff.
I'm tired now.
I'm proud of you.
You did a great job.
It was all easy stuff.
Nice work.
I'd like to call the order of the City of New Franklin Regular Council Meeting Wednesday, December 7th at 6:11. Everybody would rise for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kelly, would you do a roll call? Mr. Cotts?
Here.
Mr. Hargit?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Stock?
Here.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes from the November 16th meeting.
Second.
Of first and a second. Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Any public comment? None? And we'll start with our.
Must be doing it right.
We'll start with our first reading. Kelly, if you would read Resolution 22R70.
A resolution.
Or, not yet.
It's up to you. I don't mix it up.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to participate in the Summit County Engineers Regional Pavement Maintenance Program for 2023 and declaring an emergency.
This was discussed during our Streets and Drainage Committee. It's a program that we get into every year, and we, it's been in the program. We just don't have the streets announced yet, Jeff. Brian, just lost my mind there for a second. Brian's gonna get us, so it's probably within the next month or whatever. So I tried to get ahold of him, but I guess he's a little under the weather. So, yeah. So we're gonna ask for a wave of the three readings and make the motion to wave the three readings.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Sure.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion to adopt Resolution 22-R70.
Second. We have a first and a second. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Kelly, can we read Resolution 22R71?
A resolution authorizing additional appropriations to the 2022 annual operating appropriation budget and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution 22R71.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 22R71.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Kelly, can we read Resolution Number 22R72?
A resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the General Fund to the Police District Fund and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution 22R72.
Second. We have first and a second. Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 22R72.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Our next resolution is 22R73.
A resolution approving a then-and-now purchase order for outstanding invoices from Kavanaugh Building Corporation in the total amount of $33,558.38 and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution 22R73.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 22R73.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Next resolution is Number 22R74.
A resolution approving change orders to North Star Asphalt Incorporated for the 2021 New Franklin Resurfacing Project and authorizing then-and-now purchase orders for payment of same and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution 22R74.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 22R74.
Second. We have a first and a second. Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Resolution Number 22R62.
A resolution approving and adopting the 2023 annual operating appropriation budget for the General Fund and all other funds for the City of New Franklin and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to Finance Committee. We move to adopt Resolution 22R62.
Second. We have a first and a second. Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Resolution Number 22R64.
A resolution granting a wage increase for the New Franklin Finance Director and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to Finance Committee. We move to adopt Resolution 22R64.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yeah.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts? I think motion still passes.
Yes.
Three to two.
Four, four.
Four, four, four. Sorry. Four to two. And now we have the favorite part of the meeting, the mayor's report.
Uh, yes, it's some people's favorite, but occasionally mine.
Always the favorite.
Always. First of all, successful Christmas event. We had it well-attended. It, it was nice. We gotta get Norton and Northwest schools in there, but we had the Coventry schools, we had the Manchester schools, St. Francis, the Sales Choir, and good volunteers, good setup, and it was a beautiful event. So, that's the longest, well, we did have a, well, we had a hiatus during the COVID. That's, that's the longest-running New Franklin event. It used to be all by itself over at the Tudor House, but now it has company. Grace Church, this coming Tuesday, December 15th, at 6:30 PM, will have the ribbon cutting for their International Welcome Center. And Pastor Duckett has invited any and all who might care to attend. I think it's kind of an open house at 6 o'clock, and then they're gonna do the ribbon cutting at 6:30 Tuesday, December 15th. I did not prepare any kind of proclamation because you folks had approved the proclamation when they did the groundbreaking over there, so we're very happy for them.
What is the time, Paul?
Pardon me?
What was the time?
At 6:30 will be the ribbon cutting, and the, the open house starts at 6:00 PM. We will be reviewing, there was questions about the emergency plan and the, and the timing was good for that because, as I mentioned, we had just been to a workshop, and the county is reviewing their countywide emergency plan. So we've taken, at our staff meeting, we talked about it. I don't anticipate any, I think the plan that we have in place is, is, is well-drawn, but we're gonna review it anyway, the first quarter of, of the year, and then we'll set up a workshop with council to also review what the components of that plan are and how it fits in and dovetails with what the county does as well and what some of the other administrative agencies do. So we'll keep you posted on that. The adoptive family, I don't know what's happened over the last 48 hours. We were at $1,700. We're trying to get to $2,500. We sent something out to the local businesses today. We really need, if anybody can, you know, any or all, anything that you might be able to contribute would be helpful. And we have, the eight families have been identified, so we want to try to get this, you know, the gift cards out to them this weekend so that they'll have some time to, to do some shopping for the, for Christmas. So, many of you have already donated, we very much appreciate it. The codification process is proceeding. We're sending over the ordinances and resolutions, and that, that's moving down the street. That's gonna be very nice. We will have all of the ordinances that have been adopted since we became a city and all of the resolutions that, that have been adopted since we became a city will all then be available, in addition to all the other ordinances that, that have been passed. And the, and then we'll have the traffic codes and criminal codes all adopted as well, so, as, as well as the zoning code. And we're continuing to work on that and to be reviewed, that review that we're doing of the, of the zoning code. I'm meeting with a consultant tomorrow. He's met with Kevin Noble, and he's doing a good job. I have no idea what his recommendations are all gonna be, but when we get those, we'll, we'll get them to everybody, and I think that's gonna be a positive thing, too, to sort of, just sort of bring things into the, into the 2020s, which is crazy, even insane. All right, we have a number of board appointments that I'm gonna ask for approval. The Parks Commission, first of all. The Parks Commission is the only one, we got Parks Commission, Planning and Zoning, and BZA. And each year, these are five-year terms, and we have people that roll off, and, and some are willing to re-up, and then we have the one-year alternates. Planning and zoning and BZA are the mayor's recommendation, subject to council's approval. The Parks Commission, they're staggered in terms of what terms are, who does the appointment. This happens to be a mayor's year for an appointment, for a recommendation, anyway. Mark Norris, who has served on the Parks Commission for quite a while, is willing to continue his service, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to appoint, reappoint Mark Norris for a five-year term, beginning January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2027.
So moved.
So is okay.
Kelly, would you do a roll call? Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
And then also Larry Ray, who has served us as the alternate for many, many years, is willing to continue to serve in that regard, so I ask for a motion to appoint him as an alternate for the one-year term, January 1st through December 31st of 2023.
So moved.
So is okay.
Kelly, would you do a roll call? Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
All right, thank you. In Planning and Zoning, the first appointment I'm gonna ask you to approve is John Conley, who has served as an alternate for it. And we're, I'm asking to have him appointed to serve the balance of the five-year term that originally David Crock was appointed for. I think I mentioned David resigned. He had a lot on his plate. We very much appreciate his service. This would be for the balance of the five-year term from, and for him, it will run through December 31st of 2025.
So moved.
So is okay.
We have a first and a second, Kelly. Mr. Cotts? Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
All right, and the next one there, the five-year term. Doug Holloway has served, has been serving on Planning and Zoning, and he has graciously agreed to continue in service. So I would ask for a motion to appoint him to the five-year term, beginning January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2027.
So moved. Second.
We have a first and a second. Mr. Cotts?
Sure.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
And finally, a one-year alternate for Planning and Zoning, since Mr. Conley moved up. Mark Koeisser has, has agreed to come back and serve on Planning and Zoning as an alternate. So we're, we're happy about that. So I would ask you to approve him as an alternate for the term, January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023.
So moved. Second.
We have a first and a second. Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
All right, real quick, did you spell Mr. Koeisser's last name?
Is that a test?
No, it's just, I figured when the press is watching, they do their report, it would help them out. You're welcome, Brian.
He says, "Thank you."
All right. On the BZA, Dan Darrow came in to fill a seat, and has done a nice job. And so we are asking that Dan Darrow be appointed for the five-year term, January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2027.
So moved.
So is okay.
First and a second. Mr. Cotts? Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
And for the one-year alternate term on the BZA, Nick Olechnowitz.
Please spell. Thank you.
Uh, he goes by Schmidt. No, he doesn't. He's a great, great guy. And we're asking to have him appointed as an alternate for the term, January 1st, 23, through December 31st.
So moved. Sorry.
I'm sorry, what was ending?
Ends at December 31st, 2023.
Thank you. We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Yes.
A first.
Oh. And your second. Thank you. Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
And, and I know none of us want to take that lightly. It's, it's really very, very helpful and unselfish of these folks to, to give us their time and their talent, so we very much appreciate it. And that's all I have.
And you, you say that, that is very nice of them and unselfish, et cetera. And they do a great job. They, they put a lot of effort. They, they really believe in what they're doing on, on all of these commissions. I've had the opportunity to be a part of different meetings with them and everyone on these boards. They really take it seriously, and they put a lot of effort and thought into it. And to say we appreciate it is, is, is an understatement because, thank you. You guys really go all out.
They do. It takes a lot of time.
That's all I have.
And is anyone here for the comprehensive plan report?
I can speak to that.
All right, that sounds great.
Brief update. We're planning on having a Steering Committee meeting tomorrow night, a Microsoft Teams, not my meeting, not an impersonating meeting, to go over some planning for the community workshops that are gonna start end of January, end of January, sometime mid-February, and then there's one in March, which will, on the public workshops. The survey, the paper survey went out, got mailed out. As of today, Survey Monkey, there were 407 replies, of which 65% actually had a code from what got mailed out.
What was the percentage of that?
Sixty-five percent had, had the puff, or the code that was printed on mailer. So there were 407 on Survey Monkey, and then as of today, there were 573 paper surveys that have been returned. So you total those both up, it's roughly 17% of the population of the total number that were sent out as of this point. But what's interesting is, is that 573 of the paper surveys, a week ago, it was one. So we got a whole bunch this, this week because of the amount of time that it takes for people to fill it out and then mail it back. Um, the mail-in deadline and the online deadline, um, are, is the fifteenth, so there's another eight days to go. Um, we, they're gonna turn off the access to the online survey on the fifteenth. Um, we're gonna be discussing at the meeting tomorrow how long we wanna let paper copies dribble in based on how long it should take from, if somebody mailed it on the fifteenth, how long is it gonna take to get back? And, uh, Michelle Tennants from, uh, David Force will have some feedback for us on that, is, uh, when, make the cutoff date there and then do the scan to get, to capture the data. So roughly seventeen percent as of, at this point, and we still got another eight days for people to, to be responding. Um, for those out in TV land, uh, on Facebook, et cetera, um, talk to your friends, talk to your neighbors, have, everybody give their opinions. Katie had done a really nice, uh, yard sign, though the, uh, steering committee members, uh, took those and distributed them various places around the city. Um, I don't know, and I was hoping Mike would be here, so I could find out for him, uh, if, how many of the flyers got put up? There were some flyers that were printed that were gonna be supposed to go into local businesses, I have no idea if that happened or not. But I think we're, we're moving along pretty good.
Thank you, I did see the signs and they were nice, they were very nice, they caught your eye.
The reminder postcard.
I got my postcard and I got my postcard.
Yeah, that was helpful. And, uh, the, there'll be an ad in the Southside Theater, half-page ad in the Southside Theater on Friday.
That's excellent. And the cutoff date you said was the fifteenth?
The fifteenth for the online, and it's, uh, on the, the letter, it says to return by the fifteenth, so that should be the cutoff date for ma, for you to mail.
And right now, maybe mail is a little bit slow with it being the holidays?
Yeah, that's why we said that the fifteenth, we're figuring that, uh, I don't know, we're gonna have a discussion about it tomorrow, but, uh, we may wanna give them two, two weeks from the fifteenth, make sure we get any that were mailed before they actually do the scan, which will give us the data files from what was returned. We're planning on starting the, uh, the data analysis, uh, shortly after the first of the year, after the holidays.
And then you start the public meetings the end of January?
There's a first meeting, I believe, is the twenty-sixth, uh, all the dates and times are on the website, the city's website.
Ellen? Does anybody have any questions? Susan?
Uh, not much to report right now, we're winding down for the year, so we all have, are taking our, um, video training with V I P, our yearly stuff for the closing of the years, for the new payroll, house payroll, analytics, what have you. So, um, we're just trying to get everything gathered up so that we can have a smooth transition into the meeting.
I had a quick question, we had approved the analytics, how is that working for you?
Um, they are still building parts of it.
Okay.
Um, in fact, he, uh, Jimmy, you know, just got back with me this week, and he finished up the, most of the payroll part, the personnel part of it, because he had to put in all the rates, and I was adding that to V I P for, yes, they reg, the, the information that we already put in there, like their wages and stuff, but he needed to verify all the, um, all the, like, if they're O P Rs or O P N F, um, their health insurance, those kinds of things. So I had to go in and actually put that in V I P, or in, yeah, in V I P, so that it would translate into analytics. So, and a couple other variables that he hadn't had, so, yeah, he just got back with me and he said he thinks he has everything set up. So that part's done, um, and then the budget, budgeting part, it pulls it over from V I P, so that's, that's in the works as well.
Thanks.
And that's all I have? Thank you. Do we have anything in old business?
Yeah, I'm gonna chew up some of the time Jim saved on this conveyor report.
Sounds good.
Uh, so on old business, a couple of things I want to talk about, uh, where's Lex Colanas, I mentioned that, uh, last meeting about the sans delivery, uh, they're gonna start taking gifts on the ninth, and that runs until the twenty-first, uh, eight-eight, you can drop gifts off at the Franklin, uh, Fire Department there. Uh, one of the things I wanna do this year, I'm actually pulling on the slays on Route twelve. Uh, one of the things I remember is, you know, as a parent and as a kid, you're always wondering where Santa is, so I'm gonna put out an update, like a fifteen-minute update as to where we are on that route at least, just so people can, they, they know we're coming. Uh, this route also meets at the Chase Bank over here, we're gonna meet there at, uh, five forty-five. So, that's what I remember about that. Uh, the gifts, they need to be shoebox size, we don't wanna get things too big, 'cause then we run into, just, uh, space constraints.
No ponies or stuff like that?
No, no ponies. Uh, another thing on old business, real quick, uh, I'd mentioned at the last meeting about some of the residents on, uh, Dusty's channel right there, had some problems with the, the channel silting, and they couldn't add the good order rates. Uh, one of the residents over there, Jeff Wagner, he'd come in, he's been very, uh, very active in this, he's done a great job with, uh, organizing the residents and getting the state to come in. Uh, we got a meeting there today with O D N R, uh, or State Rep, Bob Young was there. Uh, it actually ended up being a really good meeting, it started off where there was really nothing they were gonna be able to do, and after talking with the residents, uh, they made a commitment, they're gonna come in, actually gonna meet with Jeff and go back out in that channel, take some additional, uh, depth readings, because when they were doing their original depth readings, you're gonna break in the center of the channel, which is still somewhat deep, but as you, you there off, you know, a few feet of direction, you start getting the sediment, so they're gonna go ten feet off the east side, and from what everybody said with the pictures and stuff, it, it sounds like there, that there's to be some action there, whatever, in the, uh, the bar, the dredge in there and clean that up from. So that, uh, I think that's a good, uh, good solution to, uh, that situation, 'cause it was thirty-four years, I think they said, since it was dredged last time. And then in that, I was talking with, uh, Mr. Young, I've invited him to come in and talk to council, he's our new rep, we had Bill Romer prior, uh, with the last election, we, and I owe, uh, Mr. Young. So I, I'd expect maybe the next meeting, he might come and talk with us. So that's it on old business.
Um, Helen? You say that they're, they are renting more depth readings?
Yes.
Is that something they're still gonna do this year?
They're trying to get all this wrapped up before the end of the year.
So that they may even be able to go in and dredge this year?
Uh, they're not gonna dredge this year, but they wanna have the, the
The reading?
research and stuff taken care of before that, and then it sounds like maybe the first of the year, not January, but
I understand, first?
Yeah, they're building up the dredge.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else for old business? New business?
I've got some new business stuff here.
I love it.
All right, uh, let's start with the survey. So, got my paper survey, we filled that out, we also did the online survey, entered the numbers, everything, and, uh, it went well. I, I thought that went very, very well, uh, the, the survey looked great, the, uh, the envelope came and caught your eye, it, it got your attention. I thought that went very well. Uh, one of the things I had some question about is the reason we went to not put numbers in on the survey. I talked to, uh, a few of the members on the steering committee, and I was under the understanding we would have something on it that would identify this as a resident or somebody that has a stake in, in New Franklin, versus you can just go to the website, anybody can fill it out. Uh, from my understanding, Pogmeier's not pushed back on that, is that correct, or?
That's correct, it was, uh, it's actually, uh, decision made by Pogmeier, uh, the chairman of the steering committee, and Katie.
So, like, I, I, I have no, I mean, I love sharing my community with outside people, the people that don't live in the community. Absolutely, that, that's great, they come in, they enjoy our beautiful community, but I don't know that I'm on board with having people potentially outside of the community fill out a survey and, you know, basically kind of directing us as to how we're gonna spend our tax money. But, I, I don't know how we fix that, but I don't know if there's a way that we can, I know, it sounds like we're gonna have all the analytics in the first of the year.
We will have all of the data from the survey, basically, the answer set. Um, the paper survey, the paper survey data, uh, will be put up on a Dropbox-type platform so that anybody can have access to it. The data that's there will be read-only so that nobody can go and mess with it. Um, we will be able to analyze, sort, uh, we can look at data by ward, we can look at data by age, we can look at data of, by any, any one of the, the metric sets in that data set. Uh, the online version, Survey Monkey, that data's gonna be provided to us by Pogmeier, 'cause they're the only ones who have access to Survey Monkey, because they're the subscription, uh, company. We could, if we wanted to, take a look at that subset of data, uh, we could look at only the answers that had a code associated with it, we could look at all of it, we could do a comparison between the data that didn't have a code and the data that did have a code, so there's a lot of different ways we could look at that.
And, and the reason, I've had a handful of residents reach out that same concern, so I, I wanna make sure I at least brought it up, you know, and talked about it. So if it would be possible, would, and I'm not saying we discount the surveys without code, but could we see, like, three different reports, if you will, one for just the paper, one for everything, and one for the paper and the Survey Monkey with the codes? And, and I, I would expect they're gonna be the same, you know, the, the results will be the same, with some slight variations, I wouldn't expect to see anything skewed, but.
Well, yeah, uh, sure, we can look at it any way we want, and that's one of the things that we're, uh, Jack is on the survey committee, and actually, he's gonna, he's donating some, uh, resources, his data guy is gonna help do some of the analysis.
That's great.
We also have a guy on the survey committee, who's, uh, a known partner, he's a, he's a data guy. Um, so he can be able to chart and graph, and, a, any question anybody has, we can look at it and be able to look at the data however you wanna look at it.
All right, there, there, sure, you know, I just wanna make sure, 'cause we, you guys have put so much work into this, and we wanna make sure we've, we've got compliments from the community on this, I haven't heard a whole lot of, you know, lack of compliments, but I would like to have those answers for people that may have that, that they're concerned.
I had my own concerns about it, about
Okay.
I, I, I would like to say that I think, uh, there's too much stock being put into, uh, people from outside New Franklin participating in the survey. Uh, I don't think that's gonna be a huge, uh, number, and, and I think the, to suggest to discount, uh, people that don't have, that did not put in a number when they, uh, filled out the survey. I did not put in a number, because I filled out the survey before I received the paper survey, I went online and, and I did the survey online, and we've been promoting it to go online, we've been promoting to go to the website to click on and do the survey online, uh, and, uh, to, you know, for someone to, to go there and then, you know, well, I don't have my number with me, I'm online, yeah, and then say, "Well, now your, now your survey doesn't count."
And I, I don't know where you've been dis, uh, we have discounted, 'cause I just said, I, I'm saying
Yeah, you, you mentioned about, uh, replying those out or not using those.
I, I'm talking just for, just for analysis, I, I clearly said, I'm not suggesting this
Thank you.
Okay, but I just wanted to correct myself.
Go ahead.
I, I clearly said that I'm not saying we discount those people, so. All right, that, that, that's all I have on that. Uh, the other new business here. Uh, Thanksgiving morning, so I, I don't know who's aware of this or not. Uh, one of the things I kind of wanted to do for years was to do something for the police and fire, I mean, these, these guys are here through the holidays, and nobody thinks of it, I'm totally new to them. So I had contacted both, uh, Chief Vick, Chief Leslie, talked about coming in Thanksgiving morning, got there at seven in the morning, uh, we made breakfast for the officers coming off of duty and the officers coming on duty. Had a lifelong friend, Dan Roth, help me, had my daughter, Willa, help me, uh, we got there at seven, we fed about eighteen people. These guys absolutely loved it, we made bacon and sausage links and hash browns and shrimp legs and pancakes, they just thought this was the greatest thing. So we're on board with this, I don't know if this is something council would like to be, you know, participate in, and if we could, it'd be made as a, a, you know, yearly council event, I'd be more than happy to participate in this, if I'm just gonna continue to do it myself, but I just thought it'd be great, 'cause, you know, essentially, we're the executive board of, of this business. I think it's great to see these people, meet them, talk to them, it's just, it was just a nice feel-good thing. And I don't wanna leave out everybody else, I was thinking about, in the summertime, we could do a lunch for the service guys and sans and stuff there, hot dogs, hamburgers, stuff like that.
That would be fun.
So if you guys are interested in that, I'd be willing to coordinate and put it together, but
We would love it.
Just wanna get some info for you guys.
I think it would be great, and I think everybody would be interested.
Last thing, I promise you, is, I don't know if you guys noticed, there's a scrap fence that's over here in the United Methodist Church.
Yes.
That is the, it's pretty much the sole source of fundraising for Scout Tree Politics One-Eighteen. So if you guys have any scrap and stuff, and we're talking metal scrap, I mean, feel free to put it all there, it goes to a good cause, it, uh, it funds their, their scout tree.
It doesn't, it's
Stuff they've done for years.
Don't they need here at this church?
They do.
And they do take, and this is something that sometimes we forget to mention, but for some of us, they don't have scrap, but we have money, and it's always nice to make donations to those, and you can, and I think Sharon normally is here.
She is.
And she, she always mentions, like, when they have something, and, but I think that's something we forget to mention, 'cause a lot of people, it's easier for them to write a check or to give a cash donation than to pull out some scrap and bring it in.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention it just so people are aware of it.
Mm-hmm, so they will know.
That's it.
And that's their main fundraiser?
That's actually one of their main income sources, since they're not, you can't take breakfast anymore.
Sounds good. Does anybody else have any old business? None? I have one person I want to mention, his name is Dan, and I'm gonna screw up his last name, I know it. I'm just gonna call him Dan, he owns R F D Services, and that's, um, he did some work for me. It's at fifty-eight eighth more Manchester Road, New Franklin, right across from, um, The Eagles, he just bought that place, and I don't know if you guys have noticed how he's fixed it up, really a nice young man, just goes above and beyond. And I have his phone number, three, three, zero, six, oh, seven, seven, three, one, three, and he wants someone to do services. This, he did roofing for me and some metal that I had to have done, but he does all different types of things like that. And again, his name is Dan, and like, as I said, I would, I would say his last name, but I know I'm gonna screw it up, but I did give you the telephone number, three, three, zero, six, oh, seven, seven, three, one, three. Thank you. Does anybody in the audience have anything that they would like?
I have one question, uh, a little later, Adam said, uh, you mentioned that adoptive family? If you wanna make a donation, do we, would you maybe gotta check to New Franklin, or?
No, the checks will go to, uh, Catherine Smith, 'cause we, we're not running it through the, the city, and then she'll give the, she's providing receipts for those, but, thank you, appreciate it.
And how much more do you need, Paul, you'd like to do twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, we're at seventeen hundred, I don't know what's come in in the last forty-eight hours, but, uh, and it'd be great to have, you know, if we go over all of that, we're gonna divide it by eight, and that's going out to these families, so.
And these are eight very needy families in our area.
And they're identified by the four school districts, two from each one.
That's good. And Paul, do we have a need for an executive session tonight?
We do, we need, uh, an executive session to discuss pending or imminent court action.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to adjourn for the executive session.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Helen, would you please?
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Betterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Helen, no, no decisions needed.
Correct. Next meeting?
Yes, Mr. Hargit? December twenty-first, are you done?
Yes.
Thank you.
Party, sir.
I'm still working.